In accordance with the schedule of school board meetings approved by the school board at their January 9, 2018 organizational regular meeting in pursuit to bylaw 1-46 and Virginia Code 2.2-3707, the school board will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, February 6 at 5:30 PM in the school board chambers in the school administration building number 6 at the municipal center 2512 George Mason Drive, Virginia Beach, Virginia. The purpose of this special meeting is for presentation of the superintendent's estimate of needs for fiscal year 2018-19 and to proposed capital improvement program, CIP, fiscal year 2018-19 through fiscal year 2023-2024. At this time, I would ask my fellow school board members to register their attendance on the voting board. At this time, I would ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand as you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as printed. Mrs. Riggs has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Haltz. All in favor, Mr. McDonald.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the agenda to add Item C to our agenda. Action to invite Thurgood and Hermitage Elementary Community to speak on location of Thurgood Elementary School students during replacement of Thurgood Elementary School as part of our hearing on non-agenda items for our meeting on February 13.
Second. Mr. McDonald has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Melmack. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please register on the voting board. The amended motion has passed. So we will now have Item C added to the meeting. Could you read that again, Mr. McDonald?
Yes. Item C is action to invite the Thurgood and Hermitage Elementary Community to speak on location of Thurgood Elementary School students during replacement of Thurgood Elementary School as part of our hearing on non-agenda items for our meeting on February 13.
Thank you. Yes.
For clarification, I didn't hear it as a non-agenda, so it's at the end of the meeting, just after, was when we're asking them to speak, just for clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, we have a presentation for the estimate of needs, Dr. Spence.
We do. Thank you, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, school board members. Apologize in advance, I'm a little froggy. So if you have questions about something I said, I'll certainly be happy to answer those at the end. It is time once again to present to you the annual superintendent's estimate of needs. Traditionally, this was considered the unofficial kickoff to the board's budget development process, but as you know, in actuality, this document is a reflection of the countless discussions and workshops that we've had throughout the years about budget priorities and funding levels. As such, it'll be no surprise to you that this proposed $770 million operating budget strategically addresses critical needs such as reducing class size, replacing aging buses and technology, and ensuring equitable compensation for our outstanding staff. Beyond that, this estimate of needs positions us to continue the phase in of full-day kindergarten and move forward with our one-to-one technology initiative. At the same time, we're able to reduce our reliance on reversion funds by $2 million and, for the first time in many years, to contribute Pago funding to the capital improvement plan. Before I dive deeper into the specifics of the plan, I would like to note that we are able to accomplish so much in this budget cycle because of the financially firm ground on which VBCPS currently stands. For more than a decade, school administration and the school board have implemented cost-saving measures and made fiscally responsible decisions about academic programs and employee compensation. Budget balancing strategies such as eliminating central office positions, cutting non-instructional budgets, ending specialty programs, and raising class sizes were not easy, but they were necessary in order for the division to persevere through the recession and the slow post-recession recovery. Despite these challenges, our staff and our students have flourished, and I'm proud to say that all of our schools are fully accredited for the first time since 2010-2011. In addition, the division posted a record on-time graduation rate and the lowest cohort dropout rate in a decade. And its accomplishments like these that don't come easy but are the result of hard work by our extraordinarily talented teachers, our inquisitive students who are actively engaged in rigorous and meaningful learning together. When that takes place consistently from classroom to classroom and school to school, we know that incredible things can happen. For example, for the sixth consecutive year, VBCPS students outperformed their national public school peers in the overall SAT mean score and mean section scores, and our scores were also the highest among school divisions here in the Hampton Roads region. VBCPS and 28 of its schools earned 2017 Virginia Index of Performance Award from Governor Terry McAuliffe and the Virginia Board of Education for its ongoing academic excellence and growth. And VBCPS once again led the state in the number of students earning industry credentials. Last year, 12,765 industry credential tests were taken by students. 10,621 tests were passed with an 83.2% pass rate. Since the 2002 school year, over 78,000 industry credentials have been earned by Virginia Beach students. According to the College Board, 1,354 students in our school division were designated as 2017 Advanced Placement Scholars for earning scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. And in addition, 62 students received the prestigious title of National AP Scholar for having an average score of four or higher on eight or more exams. All VBCPS high schools made the Washington Post's America's Most Challenging High Schools list for preparing students to take college-level courses and tests. And of the seven school divisions in Hampton Roads, VBCPS is the only one to have all of its high schools make this list. The Center for Digital Education has named us one of the nation's best digital school districts, awarding the division a top-10 ranking in its annual digital school district survey. Graduating seniors in the class of 2017 earned and accepted the highest scholarship amount of any prior graduating class. Over $87 million were offered in scholarships and over $58 million were accepted. VBCPS was recently selected for study by the Successful Practices Network based on our work around school improvement and support. And VBCPS was just selected by two revolutions as the sole national partner district on a Carnegie Foundation project to collaboratively develop a future of learning model that will serve as a scalable model for school divisions across the country. So these are only a few of the accomplishments that are worth celebrating, but they shouldn't and they cannot overshadow what happens in our schools every single day. If you visit any school across this city on any given day, you'll find examples of teachers and administrators and central office support teams collaborating with one another and with our community partners to support student learners both social, emotionally, and academically. And our emphasis on developing the whole child and on providing each student with a transforming learning experience are at the heart of the many successes that I just mentioned. Our community, rightfully so, expects excellence from our school as well as the availability of programs and opportunities to address individual students' needs and interests. Our strategic plan, Compass to 2020, clearly articulates that work and underscores the need to thoughtfully allocate resources in order to attain our goals. This estimate of needs demonstrates our commitment to not only meeting our community's expectations but to exceeding them. For example, knowing that reducing class size is a top priority, this spending plan includes 28 additional full-time equivalent, or FTE, instructional positions allocated across the elementary, middle, and high schools to strategically lower class sizes and courses and subject areas with the greatest enrollment. In high schools, these positions will also continue to reduce the number of teachers who are assigned more than 150 students. As a reminder, this is in addition to the 40 positions we put back in the current year's budget for these same purposes. Also, this estimate of needs includes 12 high school counselor positions to augment academic and career planning as well as social and emotional support programs for students. 10 technology support technicians and three instructional technology specialists are also recommended to support the division's one-to-one technology initiative. The addition of the three ITS positions, for example, allows us to ensure that each school has a full-time ITS to support our teachers and students in the classroom. In order to retain and attract the most qualified candidates for these and every position in the division, we must deliver a competitive compensation package. To that end, this budget proposal recommends a 1.5% cost-of-living salary adjustment for all employees and a 0.5% step increase for eligible employees. This recommendation also fully funds the remaining equity adjustments for employees on the unified scale. And we know that healthcare costs continue to be a concern, therefore, every effort was made to keep any increases small as possible. With that in mind, a moderate 1% increase in employee premiums is included along with a 1% increase to the employer cost for healthcare. So how's that going to impact our employees? As an example, the monthly premium increase for an employee with the standard family plan will be $5.61. As a reminder, the 2017-18 budget included no premium increases for employees. We've also been able to address a number of other school board priorities. For example, $493,000 in additional funding has been allocated to support costs associated with special education mandates. Funding is also provided to replace two special education buses and 38 general education buses, moving us closer to the division goal of replacing 50 buses annually. Furthermore, this estimate of needs also includes additional funding for many of the priorities identified in the five-year special education plan. Among the other expenditure highlights included in this spending plan are $1.5 million for devices and resources to grow the division's digital technology initiative and earmarked funds for Phase 2 of the planned expansion of preschool and full-day kindergarten programs. As initially planned, this will allow the division to offer full-day kindergarten at an additional 12 schools next year, bringing the total to 34 elementary schools at the start of the 1819 school year. Beyond academic programs and employee compensation, there are two important components of this budget that are also noteworthy. First, we are able to partially address the structural flaw in our operating budget by further reducing our reliance on reversion funds. The fiscal year 2018-19 budget uses $6.8 million of school reserve funding, which is $2 million less than the current year, and you'll note that that's what we projected in the five-year forecast. Second, we are also including $500,000 in Pago funding for the CIP. You may recall that annual Pago contributions were eliminated from the superintendent's estimate of needs beginning in fiscal year 2011-12 in order to balance the operating budget, but we would like to slowly be able to resume the practice of allocating funds for one-time capital needs. I'm pleased to present you with a strategic spending plan which meets the most pressing needs of our school division. There are, of course, several other needs that will remain unfunded, things like additional math and literacy coaches and classroom teachers to further reduce class size, structural improvements in some of our older buildings, desired additions to the bus and white fleet, and funding for athletic field lights at high schools, to name a few. All of our unmet needs, including additional technology needs, will no doubt be included in our upcoming budget discussions as we work together to finalize your 2018-19 budget. Chief Financial Officer Farrell Hansker and I look forward to supporting you during that process and in ensuring that we're financially able to provide the best possible learning opportunities for every single child in Virginia Beach every day. So at this time, I'm going to invite Farrell and Tony Arnold to talk about our budget balancing strategies and the CIP. Mr. Hansker.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Good evening. You've seen the budget pie chart before. Just to point out that 85% of the budget pie is allocated to salaries and benefits for our employees, which means we're a very labor-intensive organization. The other 15% reflects all the non-salary and benefit expenses that we incur in the budget. Some of these examples of those non-personnel and benefits line items are printing and binding, purchasing services, utilities, fuel for the school buses, telecommunications, garbage disposal, insurance, instructional and non-instructional supplies and materials, repair and maintenance parts, travel, professional development, computers, software, et cetera, any non-personnel or benefits object of expenditures. Of this 15%, just about 2%, maybe a little less than that, 2% of the 15% really leaves us with some discretionary spending. So budget is, the CFO would tell you, is a very tight budget. But we've been able to do a lot of things in next year's budget. And I'm going to share that with you in the next slide. And this is also how we balance the budget for this year. If you see the top third of this slide, that reflects all the revenues, all the sources of funds that we get, including what those funds are from those sources in the current year and what we're projecting in 1819, and then, of course, any change to that. The net increase in revenues is a little over $15.2 million. Then if you look at the expenditure section in the last two-thirds of this slide, you'll see some credits with brackets around it, meaning that's a positive in terms of it's not an expense. And the baseline adjustments, that first one, as you know, we don't build a budget from one budget to the next budget year using budgeted dollars of the current year. We project what we think our expenditures are going to be in the following year, and that projection is what we use to base the next year's budget on. So we were able to make, if you will, some baseline adjustments. We had, as you know, over the years, kept trying to increase our expenses for VRS. We struggled with finding the funding to do that. And lo and behold, this year coming up, we actually are able to reduce the VRS costs because they changed the factor or the formula for calculating it. So that's going to save us almost $2.7 million, and so that's really good news. In addition, there's a long-range plan for implementing a new formula for the allocation of custodial staff. And so this is the second year of allocating that new formula. We're phasing it in, and that saves us about $591,000. Their increase for the 2% salary increase, which is 1.5% cost of living and 1.5% for the step increase, increment, experience step increase, that's $10.5 million. The completion of the unified scale, the equity adjustments, this would be the last year of that, and we're fully funding that, a little over $2 million. There will be some strategic class-size reductions at the elementary, the middle, and primarily at the high school level. That's going to cost us a little over $2.1 million. And then you see some of the others. I'm going to go ahead and name them because these are important new things in the budget that we just haven't been able to do over the last few years. Adding 12 full-time equivalent high school counselors, adding three additional instructional technology specialists, as I understand that, that gives us a full-time position like that in every school. Adding 10 FTE technology support technicians, we've got to have folks at the schools that help teachers, that help keep that equipment, that technology up. And we have more and more technology being implemented in each school, so we've got to put the support behind that. Additional replacement school buses, you know, we have an ongoing need to replace school buses. So it's a total of, I guess it's, yeah, seven buses, five regular bus, ed buses, and two special ed buses. The bus fleet doesn't necessarily grow. We're replacing older buses, but some of the newer buses come with more and complex technology. So we've got to support that with some more trained technicians. So we're adding two maintenance technicians to support the maintenance of the buses. Some additional funding to support special ed mandates and some of the things noted in the strategic plan and the study that was done a couple of years ago. And some additional software couched under student security, and you can read what that means. And the last thing is, in the transition of the CIP project for Thurgood, because of the additional mobile units and et cetera at site, we will add another security person at that site. So we're able to do a whole lot of things that we just haven't been able to do in many, many years. And we hope that you agree with the superintendent and administration that this is a very, very good budget year coming up next year. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tony, and he'll cover the CIP.
Welcome, Mr. Arnold.
Good evening. Thanks, Farrell. Glad to present the superintendent's 2018-2019-2324 capital improvement program. Just a few highlights. These are projects that are in the current capital program. The modernization of John B. Dye Elementary School, a $26 million occupied modernization. We started this past summer. We're about 20% complete. That's obviously fully funded in the program. Replacement of Thurgood Elementary School, a $28.3 million elementary school replacement. Design is about 75%. Scheduled to advertise and bid this spring, again, fully funded. Replacement of Prince Sam Middle School, a $78.9 million middle school replacement. If you've driven down Seaboard Road lately, you'll see that the building has been torn down, and we're pretty close to finishing up the recycling of the building materials. Design is approaching 90% on that project and tracking similarly to Thurgood. It will be advertised for bid in this spring. Just real briefly, talk a little bit about what's been accomplished. You know, I think it's good to remind ourselves what we've done in terms of modernizing or replacing our older assets in this school division. And so you see here our modernization replacement program, 33 facilities that we've replaced in the past two decades at the order of 3/4 of a billion dollars. We are also in the process of updating our long-range facilities plan. You'll hear a little bit more on that at a workshop next week. We've had two community dialogues. We have four more scheduled in the four quadrants of the city in the middle of March. Got another steering committee meeting at the end of this month. So you'll, again, you'll hear more about us setting the blueprint for the next decade or so in terms of maintaining those assets that we haven't gotten to yet. So what's in this capital program? Just some highlights. We're continuing with our energy performance contracts program. We've completed $24 million to date. There's another $20 million to come in the next four fiscal years. And again, reminding you, when you've got 11 million square feet of assets and buildings that are older, with older technology and older lighting, there are lots of opportunities to run a more efficient business. So that's how, this is one way how we've been able to, while growing in terms of square footage on the order of 8% or 9%, we tear a building down, we put a building back that's bigger. We've been able to reduce our energy consumption over the past decade on the order of about 27% or 28%. And so, you know, that's, we talk about the impact on the operating budget and those monies going back into the classroom. That is real significant over time. You know, one other byproduct of this that, quite frankly, we don't talk enough about is the impact on the learning environment. And some of you have been around in some of our classrooms that had lighting that was 20 and 25 years old. And so now all of our performance contracts and new construction projects are lit with fully LED lighting, and the impact on the learning environment, the energy savings aside, is really, really significant and has a real impact on teaching and learning. A project that was new last year, 21st Century Learning Environment Improvements, we call it our library flips. We're flipping 16 libraries in nine elementary schools, four middle schools, and three high schools. The furniture and equipment is in the process of being ordered. We're, a fair amount of the, it's light demo work, it's not a heavy construction project. That work is being handled by in-house staff. Our maintenance folks have actually started some of the light demo. So over the course of the next six to eight months, you'll see the heart of these schools transformed and flipped into a 21st century learning environment. It's a really, really cool project. And we picked schools, you know, schools applied and competed for this work, but it was schools that were older that are not in the queue to be modernized or replaced. So trying to invest back in those schools that are not going to receive a significant capital improvements. A new project to the program is the Plaza Annex Laskin Road Office Consolidation. We, as you know, have an administrative office annex that's been in the Laskin Road property for quite some time, and a building that is obviously very old. We haven't used it for school purposes in some time. And so the long-term plan for that piece of property is, we're still working with the Department of Economic Development, is to market that property and sell it, use the proceeds from the Witch Duck property, the Laskin Road property, and build a approximately 50,000-square-foot office addition behind the Plaza Annex and relocate all of those functions under that roof. That will, we think, I don't ever want to say complete, but together with the buildings we've built and corporate landing for our operations folks, the new bus facility and that building, will solve our long-term office space, administrative space needs in this division. We are in front of that designing and getting ready to build this spring and the summer the parking lot addition at Plaza Annex around it that will support this. That's long overdue, and if you've parked over there, you've experienced that. Smaller project, elementary school playground equipment replacement. Playground equipment gets old like anything else, it's an outdoor asset. We partnered two decades ago with Parks and Recreation in building the playground equipment at the elementary schools. Equipment's changed, it's gotten older, it's time to go in and replace it. So you'll see $250,000 a year. So over the course of the next six or eight years, we will go in and strategically replace the playground equipment. And not a new project, but Prince Sam High School replacement, which has been in the program for quite some time. This updates the cost estimate, tries to better define when we might start. In the program is $83 million of what we estimate to be $127.4 million project. And so you'll see that partly funded in the program and the balance of the funding hanging outside of the program. In total, the total program, which includes appropriations to date, is $493.7 million in year one, the year that counts, fiscal year 1819, $47.5 million. So the next two sheets are really where historically you have spent most of your time. This represents the funding resource side of the program. The yellow highlights define where there have been modifications from what was in the program last year. We always highlight year six.
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt you for half a second. This is in your CIP booklet, if you haven't found that yet, and it's under the Funding Summary tab.
Oh, that's where we.
That's all you guys looking for.
All right. Thank you. That's all right. Those hooks are hot off the press. There's about two. It's about 2:00, 7:00.
Yay, thank you.
Sorry about that. So the funding and resource side of the program, again, the yellow highlights represent where there have been changes made from what was in the approved program last year. We always highlight year six, which in this case is year 2324. That's new to the program. You know, as Farrell mentioned, you see Pago in fiscal year 1819 of $500,000. Just, this for your information, we have, just for purposes of a placeholder, placed that $500,000 in Project 10003, renovations and replacements, energy management. And we'll look for some guidance in terms of what you might like to use that for, along with any other comments you might have on the program. You know, you've heard discussion over athletic field lighting and things like that. So again, long list, long list of needs. In the interest sale of property, the two changes in fiscal year 1819, the $6 million and $70,000, that is comprised of $70,000 in interest earned. Typically, when we have cash from, used to be from Pago, from sale of property, we generate interest on that, we retain that. It includes $1.5 million from last year, if you recall, the sale of the Adult Learning Center to the city for $3.5 million. You did not appropriate all of that, and so $1.5 million has also been sitting in the bank and generating interest. And it also includes the sale of the Witch Duck property, which is obviously not closed yet, $4.5 million. So that's how you get to $6 million and $70,000. In year two, fiscal year 1920, the $6 million, $980,000 is simply a number in year two, assuming the sale of the Laskin Road property. The science to that number is that number is placed in there, and that's what balances the Plaza project. So if you go into the Plaza project, you'll see that number in fiscal year two to fully fund that project. Okay. The funding summary, I know you can't read it. It's in your book. I'm not going to go into a tremendous amount of detail. We'll do that over the course of the next month. Again, the yellow highlights are changes. The majority of the yellows are new projects, and they're what we call renovations and replacements projects that are phase threes, grounds, HVAC, re-roofing in various. And the reason that we do that, the, our accounting folks, as well as the folks on the city side, every six, eight, 10 years like to create a new phase so that you don't build up too much funding in terms of appropriations to date. It's just, it's good fiscal practice. So it's time to do that on these four projects. That's why you see new projects for those in terms of phase threes. You'll see the phase two, which are still active in terms of funding in the program. We'll spend those down. You'll likely see those disappear next year. Really, those are the most significant changes to the program. I talked a little bit about the projects that are new in the previous slide. So we've, you know, we've got a lot of ground to cover over the next month. We look forward to working with you all on putting together a great capital program. So with that, I'll turn it back over, and we'll talk about what's next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just indicated the dates up here of the next significant thing that will be happening all throughout. Workshops each week and scheduled to adopt a budget March 7. Get, document all the details over to the city by the following week, April. We don't have a date yet. Diane is going to be asking Chairman, Chairwoman Anderson tomorrow. There are four different, three different dates in April that we could present to the city. They've given me three dates, so select one, hopefully where the chairman and the vice-chairman and the superintendent coordinate their schedules. And those are also open to, we don't have a date yet. We won't even have a time probably until about two weeks from that presentation. And by May the 15th, by code, the city has to adopt its budget. That typically happens before that date, so probably between the first week and second week of May, the city will adopt a budget. So those are the dates, things. I'd like to just take one quick second to thank the budget staff. Not all of them are here. Some of them retired, they went home. Some of them are still upstairs. They were the folks that came in here with me during the inclement weather, or they worked at home remotely to plug in desktops. So this was a challenging budget development process, to say the least, but thankful for the superintendent, seeing the staff who also pitched in and got some decisions made early on what we're going to recommend, and then the staff took that in. That, Chairman, Chairwoman Anderson, Dr. Spence, you had some comments, I think.
Yes, Dr. Spence.
Well, just again, we thank you for your attention to that. We know it's a lot to digest. I know you'll have a lot of questions. Just as a reminder, typically at the presentation of the SEON, we don't get into a lot of those questions because most folks haven't had time to really digest what you've gotten, which is why we have a number of workshops scheduled, including one next week, and then, as needed after that, until the end of the month. And so one thing I would say is, just again, it's obviously helpful if you do have specific questions that you do plan to bring up at workshop, and it's helpful to have those in advance so we can give you the best possible answers at that time. So please do that. And though in years past, we've also offered, if you want to sit down with us or budget staff and you have specific questions you'd like to go through, we'll make ourselves available based on our schedules and yours, and do the best we can to accommodate those requests in between workshops. But we will see you for further discussion on this at the next workshop, and we do appreciate it. And I do want to just commend Farrell and his staff, an outstanding budget development team, and another great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Spence. Thank you, Mr. Hansiger, and your team. We appreciate that. The chair will now entertain a motion to invite the Thurgood Elementary and Hermitage Elementary parents to speak on non-agenda items at this time. Is there a motion? Mrs. Holtz has made the motion, seconded by?
For next.
For next, for next week, right. It's for next, the 13th, I'm sorry. I'm going to let Mr. McDonald speak to that. Did you second that, Mr. McDonald?
I did. I am now, if I did not a moment ago. I think that, I know that we have all been receiving feedback from the Thurgood and Hermitage Elementary School community about the plans to locate the Thurgood Elementary School students during the replacement of their school. And we've also heard calls to have an opportunity to hear from that community. Because we would prefer to do that, I think, sooner rather than later, what I am asking the board to approve is for administration to invite the Thurgood and Hermitage Elementary community to come speak to us on non-agenda items at our next school board meeting so that we do have that opportunity to hear from them. Why non-agenda? Because as of right now, I don't have an agenda item to guarantee that they'll be speaking to. Why next week? We want to hear sooner than later. But we're going to be doing something a bit more than we have in the past, and even more than what we do with other hearings, is that we are going to send a letter home via the students to that entire community, inviting them to come and speak at that meeting, encouraging them to come and speak because we want to hear from them as an opportunity that is seeking. And I hope that this opportunity is one that they'll avail themselves of and that the board would be supportive of as we seek public input on this important issue.
Thank you. Any other? Ms. Manning?
I have two things. Could I make a suggestion that we not require that they sign up in advance, that they can just maybe sign in when they come in the door?
I'm not sure we can change that rule. I think at this point, they have to sign up by 3:00. Is that right, Mrs. Alexander?
But technically, they can still speak even if they haven't signed up, correct? Okay.
Non-agenda speakers are required to sign up in advance by 3:00 the day of the meeting so we can plan our meeting accordingly.
Oh, I thought it was suggested. I didn't know it was required.
It is required for non-agenda items speakers, not regular agenda items.
Okay, thank you.
And we plan to put that in the letter, and we plan to put the number so that they know they need to call in advance to sign up.
Okay. And then my second thing is, I would like to recommend that we halt any plans that, for the swing space and moving the portables over there in the construction, until after we do hear from parents so that we can show that we genuinely want to hear their perspective.
I'm not sure we can add that to our.
I can just, just for clarity, actually, is it okay, rather than a letter home, if we send an alert now, which would include an email and a text message? Because that's more efficient and then more likely to get read.
If that, if the board is fine with that, I'm fine with that.
Okay. I just think that's a more efficient system for us. And there are no plans moving right now for that, so we should.
So that, so in other words, that is not happening now, right?
They've been doing some work with the fence, but there's no portables, no, we're not.
Ms. Manning? Well, I understand that portables have already been cleaned out, for example, at First Colonial High School. I know the students have already been moved from their portables into the building, so it does appear that things are happening.
Want to vote, Mr. Edwards? Okay, so we're going to stick to the topic. We need, so the topic is that we are going to vote that we send a text message, is that correct, or no? An alert now message, an alert now system, and followed up with emails to parents, is that correct?
Why don't you just say communicate? Communicate. Get the superintendent to communicate with the community.
Mr. McDonald, is that?
Through all of our alert now channels, that community is fine.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Yeah, Ms. Anderson and Mr. McDonald, I appreciate you all putting this on the agenda. I know Ms. Manning and I had requested it last week, and I really do appreciate this and for the whole board to support hearing from these folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we want, we want the community to know that we are listening and that we have heard them. So, and that, so, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate on the voting board. Okay. Our next regular meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is scheduled for Tuesday, February 13th, with a workshop scheduled starting at 2:00. This meeting is now adjourned.